Regular meeting for May eleventh to order. First up is our approval of our agenda. Motion?
Can I?
Can. And support by? All the papers say yes?
Yes.
Alright, first up is our teaching and learning feature. Dr. Vanderjack.
First we'd like to invite Millie Vander. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Stephanie. Thank you. Stephanie, she's up here, she's gonna say a few words. Say a few words and then, open it. Mrs. Stephanie.
Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Vanderjack. I'm Makenzi Stepanich, the principal at Park Elementary. And tonight I have the pleasure of introducing one of our fourth grade students in Hudsonville, Millie Vander. At the beginning of the school year, Millie asked to have a meeting with me. And when she sat down with me, she told me that she read a book that inspired her. And she had a project in mind. And so over the next four or five months, we met regularly. And she created a fundraiser for the West Michigan Veterans Coalition. And tonight she's gonna tell you a little bit about that project. So here's Millie.
I got the idea of reading a book for a book club at my local library. The book was called Jackie Haha by James Patterson and Chris Grabberstein. The book had involved a veteran and I wanted to help our veterans. I researched some veteran organizations and I decided on the West Michigan Veterans Coalition because it provides healthcare, housing, employment, and education. And I think those are all very important needs for our veterans.
Next up, please.
I decided on what we decided to do for our fundraiser. I created a blood sheet for students to take home and find donors to give an amount of money for a page or a fixed amount. I gathered prizes from local businesses, local businesses and hospitals. Next up, please. I created a PowerPoint to show to all the fourth and fifth grade classes in my school. And I went class from class to class showing the presentation. In total, we raised $1,419.57.
Are there any questions? Millie, I'm just curious as to whether or not you know anyone personally that's a veteran.
Um, I don't think so.
Wow, that's great. That's great that you care enough because though you don't know these individuals, you care about what happens to them. Thank you for that.
Like, what was the hardest part of the project? What did you find most challenging?
Probably deciding what to do, like, to raise money.
I don't know what's harder, speaking in front of this audience or in front of your classmates. But I think your parents are out there, maybe. It must be, I know we're proud, so love them. Fantastic job. Such a good job. Millie, can you come back up here? On behalf of the Board of Education and the entire staff at Park, and all kids, and our entire district, well done, thanks for all you do, not only for the district, but for those that need some more help, so, well done.
And we have another teaching and learning feature.
So next up, this is unique. We are recognizing somebody from our 56 building, which isn't even open yet. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. McClure and talk about something that looks like people in the audience are already starting to celebrate, so, Mrs. McClure.
Alright, good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Vanderjack. Thanks for letting me come this evening. So obviously we've been preparing a lot for the opening of the 56 building and we really wanted to give our students an opportunity to be a part of that. So this fall, we had a T-shirt design contest. And since our fifth graders are gonna be the leaders of this building, we had all fifth grade students get the chance to submit a T-shirt design. And they got to vote on it, fourth and fifth graders got to vote. And we had one lucky winner that was very unanimous on the design. And that student is a fifth grader at Park, Juliette Dykma. She wants to come up and her teacher, Mrs. Higgs. Her mom can also come up, she's a teacher at the high school. So, it's pretty special. So this is her design and she's obviously been wearing it. And lots of family members back there, if you wanna stand up too, they're all wearing their T-shirts. So, super fun. So this is a very nice. So we're super excited, so we're really becoming like five schools in one. And so we're bringing teachers from Baldwin and then our four Northside elementaries. And so today, her class celebrated hers by wearing her T-shirts. And then tomorrow, as the Northside, our fifth graders and fourth graders are gonna wear their T-shirts. Maybe not Georgetown fifth graders because they're at camp. Do you wanna keep them nice? Keep them for a little while.
So Juliette, I will tell you, I have a T-shirt that normally I would wear, but I have put different tonight, so I will tell you, you did an amazing job and it's perfect, fitting for the building. I'm sure not only your mom, your classmates and your teacher are very proud of you. So, well done. Great job. On behalf of the district, thank you for representing not only your school, but all fourth and fifth graders that are going through the building. So, well done.
And we have one more group to recognize.
So tonight, we wanted to celebrate with a performance, but the kids are performance out. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Vanderwall? So we'd like to recognize our state champion, Winter Guard, and ask Mr. Vanderwall to come up and say a few words about them. And if they are here, yes, you also have a beautiful recognition on behalf of the Board and the administration about your performance and the state title. So, Mr. Vanderwall.
Evening, Board of Education, Dr. Vanderjack. It's great to be here tonight. To me, what I'm experiencing right now just shows what an incredibly supportive environment we have for kids to do things, whether it's supporting veterans, making shirts for their school. I just, it's amazing the things that, opportunities that kids have at Hudsonville. And I think our guard program and so many other things here at Hudsonville are an extension of that. And if I could have an hour and a half tonight to speak, I'll talk about all the incredible people. Probably not. Just amazing. And it's too many people to even list. So when we, when we have our Color Guard members of sixteen high school students go out and compete and perform, they're representing so much work on behalf of our administration, support from our school board, support from Riley Street Road School, they rehearse. I can't even say enough good things about Rob Matthews and the Transportation Department. We had somebody hit one of our buses on a trip to Chicago. And I could not believe it, when I was in Chicago and turned around at nine o'clock in the morning and Rob Matthews was standing there. And he drove his second bus. I mean, just an amazing show of support for these kids. And it just goes on and on. I mean Rebecca Fabiana and what she does to help us schedule facilities, that is no small task in our school district. And to make sure that all these kids have what they need, she's just a joy to work with. And it goes through the VAMBOOsters and the staff that works with the kids. When we see the sixteen students perform, by the time that's happened, there's still probably another hundred people that have worked to pull that off. And that's why these things, a state championship or recognition from any of our school programs, but in this case, Color Guard, is such a feather and a tap for a community in my mind. Because it doesn't happen quickly, it doesn't happen overnight, it doesn't happen easily. We all have to overcome and support kids in incredible ways to get to this point. We have some coaches and staff members that have now been teaching with our VAM program, some of them for ten, eleven, twelve years, and have been working with these kids since they were in sixth grade. We have a student that did Color Guard in the winter and for fall marching end every year from sixth grade until now when she graduates. And several others that did it in seventh grade and eighth grade and never took a break, did it year round all the way through. And that takes a tremendous commitment level. I also don't want the effects of the pandemic a couple of years ago to get lost. We have such a supportive school that when a lot of schools were shutting down, we were still able to put a Color Guard out there. And these kids came knowing that they weren't ever going to perform their show at a competition, spaced six feet apart, using Juvenal, oh my goodness, clean everything and wearing masks while running around trying to do this activity. In that season, the fact that our kids and our staff kept going and the parents in our school supported it is really a big part of what laid the foundation for them to end up in first place this year. And I think it's a remarkable thing. So I guess my point is just to look at how supportive our schools, our principals, our administrative team, has still, everything, and the way all of these moving parts come together to create an experience like this is, to me, it's just something that makes me so proud to be a part of Hudsonville Schools. I just love being here and doing this. That said, I can't say enough about the young men and women that are in this guard program and the care and the time and energy, attention to detail, sacrifice, everything that goes into being at all of the rehearsals and honing their skills and practicing at home and raising money and paying to do this and setting aside jobs and all that kind of stuff should be a part of this team. To me, it just shows what, just an outstanding group of young people we have. And that said, the staff that works with them too, we so dedicated and just pour their hearts into what these kids do. It's just a blessing to see it and be a part of it. So, we're pretty proud of this and I hope that this can be something that we all celebrate because like I said, there's more that goes into it. Alright, it is a, it is a community event to pull something like this off. And I just thank you for your support and our admin team, can't thank the members that are out there, the students enough, you're amazing, you're absolutely amazing, and have done great things, so.
If we have members of the guard that are here tonight and they brought their equipment with them, can they, no, I'm just kidding. Can we ask?
Yeah, nobody get hurt.
Can we, can we maybe call them up? We have some certificates for them, we have a list if they're here, maybe you can call up, you can come down there and give us, now you wanna, before you leave or sit down, you recognize all the people that also support this program and work hard, and we wanna recognize you for your dedication to our kids.
So we're gonna call the guard members' names and then have some to come up, starting with Theo Barnham, Celia Brower. Glad you guys sat in the very back. Well done. Lindsay Dahon. Erica Peterson. Parker Taxton. Brendan Leerson. Garry Irish Morton. I was a friend. Now do you see our guard instructor who writes the shows, designs the shows and teaches the kids sitting back there, it was Krista Fergie. She should at least stand up and say hi to everybody.
Congratulations, thank you. One more. Alright, was this the first, first place finish in scholastic eight or?
It isn't scholastic eight, there's two lower classes. We've won the state championship in the lower classes and this is our first one in this class. Yes.
I have had the opportunity to watch the Winter Guard a lot this year and they are phenomenal, well-reserved. Next up, Student Council, we have Briella.
Hello, for those of you who don't know, my name is Briella and I was this year's Public Relations Officer for Student Council. So Jane Takma is here. She's going to be filling my shoes next year, so I would just like to welcome her and introduce Okay, so, right now for Student Council, we are planning on doing a day during lunch where we hand out ice cream to people who are in Renaissance. Especially since it's like really hot right now, everyone wants ice cream, so that is something I'm really looking forward to. We don't have a specific date, but we are planning on doing it very soon. And then the Riverbank Run is this Saturday and I'm certain Student Council members are taking the time to volunteer for that. And obviously we'll be handing out water to runners and cheering them on. And then next week will already be our last Student Council meeting for this year. We're gonna meet like once over summer to talk about homecoming stuff already. And yeah, this will be my last board meeting, so thank you so much for letting me come every month and speak to you guys. Yeah, that's all. Any questions?
You don't have any questions?
Yes, I, I finished my last one yesterday.
So Briella, just so you know, just because you don't have a responsibility, you're always welcome at future board meetings.
Yeah, I'll come and cheer Jane on.
We do have a small token of appreciation on behalf of myself and the rest of the Board members. We'd like to present you for your time and commitment to these Board members and looking forward to next year when the commitment to board meetings looks a little bit different. I know you've probably heard a little bit, so we'll talk about that next year, but that's all good. So, on behalf of the Board, good luck in the future. I know you have another year with us and we're looking forward to congratulating you a little over a year from now as you walk across the stage, hopefully right down the hall here when you graduate. But your commitment to the Board and representing your student body extremely well, we're very proud of you for all the best job.
Thank you.
Thanks Briella.
Alright, next up, we have recognition of visitors and carrying of people present. First up is Joan Boss.
Hi, thanks for having me. I would like to communicate with you today's concerns that I have about the Ruler. First of all, I would just like to mention some fads in education. I know that, you know, we're probably unfamiliar with fads. There's been reading fads, some work, some don't. There's been lunchroom food fads, some work, some don't. About thirty years ago, there was a fad in education that schools could get a free television in exchange for a short news program which the children had to watch four minutes of advertisement for Skittles and pizza and things like that. So, those are just some fads. I believe that the Ruler for you, excuse me, is a fad. I believe that it introduces serious concepts to children that should be addressed by parents and guardians. And also it takes away from valuable education time. And we all know because of COVID that children have had a learning loss and we need to really focus on recovering some of the losses that were taken. So also, I believe that it introduces concepts that pit people against each other. And I read a really good article a while back about a teacher in Rhode Island who was obviously very dedicated. And she wrote in detail about the difference of attitude that came with her children when they were introduced to a certain curriculum. And she had been very, very successful, but she said she went to the school board because she couldn't believe the change of attitude in the children. So I would like to ask you today to don't fall for harmful fads in education. We don't wanna look back in a few years and say, yeah, that wasn't a very good idea. Alternatives to something like Ruler would be character building by encouraging citizenship, qualities like kindness, thoughtfulness, sharing and fairness. This has been done for years in Hudsonville and I know there's one man on the board today that would probably remember that. I know that was in my children's classrooms, the bulletin boards, and was really encouraged by the teacher to have, you know, to have good character qualities for each other, so. So please vote no on the Ruler today and accept another alternative. And by the way, speaking of fads, I don't know if you heard, but I heard that moments are coming back. Thank you so much.
First of all, I would like to thank the Board and Dr. Vanderjack, the administrators and the teachers for doing a wonderful job at Hudsonville Public Schools. I am here to speak out against the Ruler curriculum. And I just wanna say that I stand with the majority of the constituents, parents and grandparents in the Hudsonville Public School community and believe that our priorities are for God, family and country, and that our children and grandchildren deserve basic education in the classroom. I am asking you to do the same and vote no on the Ruler curriculum. And I also wanna add that there is a federal law called the Protection of Pupil Rights. And it states that no student shall be required to submit to a survey, analysis or evaluation that reveals information concerning political affiliations or belief of the student or the student's parents, mental or psychological problems of the student or the student's family, sex behavior or attitudes, critical appraisals of other individuals with whom respondents have close family relationships, and among other things, religious practices, affiliations or beliefs of the student or student's parent. Please vote no on Ruler. Thank you.
For those on the Board that have heard my previous public comments, you know that other than my one comment, sharing my appreciation for the workshops NBC Corp. put on about the Ezra Funds, the only topic I've spoken to the Board about is Ruler and SCL. I've been consistent in those comments since my very first time of addressing it. I've spoken one-on-one with some of you over the past three years. I would hope that you agree that I'm not hard natured, I'm not anti-teacher, and I hope that you know I truly care about this district and every child. It's that caring that is the reason why I've consistently spoken out against Ruler. Over my past public comments and discussions with you, I've shared many aspects of Ruler and SCL. I've asked you to do your own research on these issues and I know you're hearing from others that would disagree with what I'm saying. It's my hope that each of you has gone beyond asking people and actually dove into the research on your own, looked at every lesson, examined every piece of supporting content and truly weighed if this is the best Hudsonville can do. I simply want to offer you some final considerations. How do you know Ruler has truly been effective and isn't just benefiting from the other great, from the great teachers, staff and support that our district already has? What about the unmedical aspects like physical activity in gym class? Studies have shown that physical activity reduces depression and anxiety in people. How can you definitively say that Ruler was behind the improvement in the students' emotional and mental health? I know the Ruler curriculum has been modified in an attempt to best fit the Hudsonville district. How does the Board guarantee that the curriculum will not be modified again without Board input or approval? What about supporting content? What if the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence were to reach out and say that they strongly urge districts to add a new part of the content to Ruler curriculum? Is that guaranteed to go before the Board first? If you can't confidently answer any of these questions I've posed, then you should vote no on Ruler. Moving forward with the modified version of Ruler would be settling and I would expect more from this Board and the district. Each of you is called to a higher standard as leaders of this district. Shouldn't you at least hold yourselves to the same standard of excellence that we ask of our students to achieve? I believe Hudsonville Public Schools can do better than Ruler and must do better. Please vote no on Ruler. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I did email the Board members and Dr. Vanderjack earlier today and I heard back from two of you, so I just wanted to read my email because I have a real life example of how my kids have been affected with the Ruler program and it's very exciting to me. So I have two daughters in elementary school and lessons being taught about negative emotions and encouraging those negative emotions. For instance- For instance, when my daughter was in first grade last year, one of the Ruler words was furious, and she was taught that it's okay to be furious. And that's just not how we teach our kids at home. Acting out furiously is not a behavior that we encourage or accept in our household. It's not how we raise our kids. The group lessons that our kids have had to sit through where classmates are asked to share about private and personal things that are happening in their life have negatively impacted my daughters. My one daughter is very sensitive. She's very intuitive of her surroundings. She wants to save the world. And when she hears about classmates that are going through difficult situations at home, whether that be parents are getting divorced, there was a house fire, grandparent has cancer, grandparent has died, a parent is incarcerated, it worries her to the core. And she cannot handle that. She's not old enough or mature enough to handle that. And she's up at night with bad dreams and constantly reliving these things that she's had to sit through in school, of her classroom sharing and her teachers encouraging this behavior. I'm sorry, this just is not right. I do feel for those kids and their situations, but they need to talk to licensed counselors, psychiatrists, not a group therapy session within the school classroom. I am a licensed healthcare provider. I'm a nurse practitioner. I have fifteen years of clinical practice, and I have experience in this realm. These kids, these elementary school kids, middle school kids, high school kids, we wonder why they're dealing with such depression, anxiety issues. You know, we need to get back to encouraging them and uplifting them, not focusing on being overly emotional and overly sensitive, and giving them actual tools to succeed in life. I am strongly opposed to Ruler. There's a lot of information about Ruler online, and I hope you took your time to research the program, who created it, and what their goals are. I don't feel it stands or lines with Hudsonville Public. Thank you so much.
That's Jerry Rodriguez.
Hey, guys. Very good. I've talked to you many board meetings, talking about Ruler, why it's important for our kids to have it in the classroom, why it's important to talk about their feelings. Acting out is different than feeling those feelings and recognizing those feelings. But I'm going to keep it really short today. It would be irrational and irresponsible to remove the Ruler curriculum without a backup in place. HPS doesn't have a different SCL curriculum. It would take longer than the summer to vet and tailor a curriculum to HPS's needs. They've already tailored this curriculum to our needs. If you want to remove Ruler, this is not the way to do it. What you should be doing is asking the curriculum team to come up with another curriculum before you try to remove the one we already have. Please think about the teachers that you would be leaving in the cold for next year, having to figure out how to teach SCL in their classrooms, how to develop those feelings, and work through those feelings, and talk about proper feelings and how to do that. Please think about the older students who then have to go more years without an SCL curriculum in place. We've seen huge numbers of Title IX violations, for example, because we don't have SCL in the higher grades. So finally, a vote to remove Ruler at this point with no backup would be a vote against the teachers in your district. So basically, what do you want to do? Support your teachers or turn your back on? That's what we got.
Tara Indis.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the SCL Ruler curriculum. I'm a 2004 graduate of Hudsonville High School, and I currently have three kids in the district, seventh grader, fifth grader, and second grader. The vote tonight would have a direct impact on my kids for years to come. There are a couple of concerns I have with the curriculum. My first concern is the origin of the curriculum and its roots being embedded in a political agenda. A political agenda should never drive what is taught to my children. I believe their public education should be focused on academics. The second and perhaps more important reason I oppose this curriculum is that it simply isn't the answer to the problem. I'm a nurse by trade, so I'm going to use an analogy to make my point. Over the course of my career, I have administered a lot of blood. It would be futile for us as healthcare providers to give blood to a patient without identifying and stopping the cause of the bleeding. This is how I view the concept of SCL. It's an attempt to fix a problem without addressing the root cause. None of us would disagree. We have to do work in this department. Our ability as a society to interact with each other has been devolving. It leaves us pointing our fingers at one group or another and crying out for policy change. Unfortunately, we're dealing with a human heart problem, and there is not one policy or curriculum that's going to cure this. However, there is very one practical and bold way that our school can make a meaningful impact on this problem, and it's this device right here. I wish I had more time to delve into examples of why this is key to making change, but I'm sure you as school administrators and parents are well aware of the dangers. From the blatant criminal example of extorting kids sexually for money, to more vast issue of the impact this has on their mental health, we can no longer sit here silently and continue to let our children bleed. The data is absolutely convincing and clear. The device and the connections it gives our kids is the root cause for the evils and difficulties that they are facing. This is not an issue that affects one race, one gender, one religion, or socioeconomic group. It is harming all of us. If you want to make a difference in the social and emotional capabilities of our kids, then start here. This device has destroyed them, their ability to interact with their peers in a positive and meaningful way. Our kids aren't accountable to their words and actions because instead of being face-to-face, they're constantly disconnected from the personhood of whom they're interacting with. Their sense of popularity, well-being, affirmation, it all comes from this. If you want change, focus on the most practical and tangible thing that is hindering it. I'm urging you to consider shifting our focus away from this curriculum as a district and community who loves our kids. Let's use our resources to come together to develop education programs to support parents in protecting their children from this device. Let's use the resources to add mental health professionals who can focus on kids who need the support, and let our educators continue to focus on academics. Let's give our children the gift of freedom from this device during the seven hours a day that they're here and force them to be face-to-face with each other again. This is how we will grow their social and emotional intelligence. Please vote no on Ruler because it's not going to stop the bleeding. Thank you.
Daisy Landstrich.
I'm really, really nervous. So please bear with me. I'm here tonight to talk to you about considering a no vote for the Ruler in our curriculum, specifically in the curriculum and through our school. In the very first year of the pilot program, I saw firsthand how my daughter was affected by using the word irritated. It affected her trauma and triggered her to tears during her class. My daughter is very bright. She is very smart. She has a lot of words, and honestly, she could probably be the superintendent of this school someday. She is a wonderful little girl and has no reason to want to leave school except that somebody called her irritating, and it reminded her of her days in foster care. And I don't share this story with you to share my daughter's story, but to tell you that there are tons and tons of kids in Hudsonville, and one of the things we love about Hudsonville is that they have so many adoptive families. And I talked with at least ten families today who are in counseling and busy tonight that cannot be here, that have seen traumatizing effects to their kids. Because we do SCL with our counselors and in our home, and then you take it to school, and our kids can't decipher the difference between sharing their feelings with their friends and getting teased and bullied, and sharing their feelings with their counselor and being in a safe space. We want our teachers to be safe. We want our schools to be safe. I love that Hudsonville is participating in social-emotional learning, and I have done that as a foster parent and adoptive parent for many years. And I really, really appreciate that you guys are taking an active role in the Hudsonville kids' mental health. But putting it in a curriculum where kids are forced to talk about their feelings without a licensed mental health therapist is absolutely unexcusable and unsafe for our kids. In adoption, we call ourselves the village and that we support one another. So I know I'm only one person here, but I have many standing behind me who are putting out fires at their own home that could have been prevented by not talking about their feelings with their class. We have wonderful PBI specialists at our school, and I feel that we can utilize them and use some of these things. We're on the right track. We're just not there yet. So I would really like you to consider voting no to put Ruler into the curriculum. Thank you.
Sandra Diddy.
Greetings, board. I invite all of us to take a look around the auditorium. It is clearly the second-best auditorium around, easily. Fun fact, there are five hundred and eighty seats here. If you're anything like me, you've been to musicals here back before we got the new auditorium, and you have seen this room completely packed, with the exception of this very front row because this is where the orchestra pit was. And I want you to think about that and picture that. Someone in every single seat, because that brings it to about five hundred and sixty people. And that is the same number of additional people who turned out to vote this year. That's a ten percent increase over last year, and they all voted yes. There's been a lot of talk about last year's vote being the closest it's ever been. Reminder that that's just percentage, not raw numbers. And we were concerned that that trend would continue. That has clearly been proven not to be the case. Even beyond that, when you actually do the trend lines for the past decade, the opposite is true. Yes, this outpacing no at one and a half times the rate. And we have plenty of reason to think that will continue, especially since there was not a single additional no vote this year. The no plateau, so that gap that's one and a half times has only been widened as we continue to look. Even the sinking fund passed with more votes than it did last time. And people don't like the sinking funds across the board. Zeeland passed their mileage with seventy-six percent. They still let sixty, forty on the sinking fund. And it's not a big surprise. People support our kids more than our buildings. But even with that, we're still moving in the right direction. So it is clear that this has not been the doom and gloom that many echo chambers have made it out to be. In fact, the reality, the real reality, is that this community is saying yes. Yes to our kids, yes to our teachers, yes to our schools. And that's important because tonight, you vote. And we've all seen the survey results. We know our teachers supported. Now we know the community has the back as well. The data is clear. Teachers, parents, kids, now the community have given this a resounding yes. I hope all of you join in with us and vote yes tonight as well. Thank you.
Randy Beist.
Oops, started that again. I'm not quite sure how to do this. Fourth graders speak better than I can. That's impressive. Good system we have here. Good evening, board. Tonight, I want to briefly touch on one subject, that being the trust between U.S. board members and that of the community. When you were elected to this board, when you were placed on it to fill a vacant position, the community believed that well-being of our students was and is your foremost concern. Over the past year and a half, the number of parents had issues with particular books that were or are on the shelves within our district. With due diligence, the board listened to the opposing views on the subject, and after extensive discussion, came up with a way forward, notably by embracing the policies that had previously been put in place by our administration, professional educators, and resource personnel. The district then made it possible for parents and our students to selectively determine what books within the district could be read by their children. In other words, parents were given control to limit which books their children can read. The interesting thing about this restricted reading list, of all of our parents within the district, over ninety-nine percent of the parents have opted not to put their children onto the list. Another way of saying this, over ninety-nine percent of our district's parents trusted the decisions of our teachers, our staff, administration, and the decisions of their children. Over ninety-nine percent of parents trust them. With emotional learning on the agenda tonight, our district has done the surveys that U.S. board requested. The evidence suggests that our highly skilled teaching staff, our parents, and our students overwhelmingly embrace the emotional learning that has been trialed within our district. While you have and will hear many reasons why not to embrace emotional learning, you know, as you are educators, that our children need help navigating this world. They need to learn how to express themselves in the midst of a complex world, one at times filled with tensions and one that can be filled with much happiness and joy. If we are, as a district, to ignore the emotional needs of our students, we are saying that we do not need to develop the whole person, that our emotions have nothing or little to do with a student's ability to learn and function healthy ways within the classroom, as a fourth grade teacher. Over the past couple of years, when you, as a board, would be in difficult decisions and discussions such as this one, you would remind one another that as a board, you needed to look at the data. When you look at the data regarding emotional learning that the district has trialed, and then look at the approval by parents and students, you have a clear path forward on this particular issue. Regardless of all other voices, you know the data, and let me remind you of the public trust that has been given to each of you. Thank you.
Emily Brechtin.
Hello, my name is Emily Brechtin, and I have four kids in the district. I'm here to speak and support a social-emotional learning and the Ruler curriculum in particular. Please allow data to drive your vote, data that show overwhelming support by the teachers and a strong majority of parents supporting Ruler as well. As others have already spoken about those surveys, I'd like to switch from a macro district-wide perspective to a micro view. On the way home from a recent board meeting, my eleven-year-old asked that I explain to her why members of this board and greater community object to Ruler when she found it so helpful. As I honestly didn't and still don't have a good explanation for her, I punted and asked that she tell me what she's learned from Ruler and why she values these lessons. And she did for ten solid minutes until we arrived home. She has participated in the entirety of the pilot program, and here's a sampling of her takeaways. Understanding and naming my feelings, learning how to regulate my emotions, building skills to respond to different situations, growing in my ability to take another's perspective. She described her classroom as a calmer place and better learning space because of Ruler. As I've reflected on Ruler and SCL, it seems that most objections fall into two categories. First, it's that social-emotional learning does not belong in the classroom. This objection sometimes sounds like teachers should stick to teaching, reading, and writing. It's interesting to me that I never hear concerns about physical education in our schools or calls for its removal. At its core, PE helps students learn about themselves, promotes wellness, and strives to establish good habits. So does SCL. Classroom teaching has always been more than subject instruction. The practice is not new, just the acronyms are. The second main objection is that SCL is better suited for some kids, but not for the entire student body. There is significant othering in this objection, and I cannot unpack it all in my remaining time. However, I'd like to counter this argument by discussing my youngest child again. This child displays emotional maturity, leadership, and compassion. You witnessed it here in January where she spoke to you about her friend and brought me to tears. She's been raised in a home where emotional literacy and mental well-being are prioritized, and yet, she still has so much to learn and has gleaned vital intra- and interpersonal skills from Ruler. Social-emotional learning is for all of us, for our individual health and the vitality and well-being of our community. I understand that parents have concerns about the materials presented to their children. I have concerns about the materials being taken away from my children. It should not be an option to remove highly-supported and important curriculum from the majority because of the concerns of the minority. Please keep SCL. Please keep SEL in our schools.
Jill Lazarus.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate everyone taking their time and dedication to the HPS district, and I know you do not have any doubts, so thank you. The marketing rule of seven states that people need to hear a message seven times in order to make an impact. I've emailed the Board twice, standing here today, and I have some visuals. So I know it doesn't add up to four, but I hope so is my clearance. Ruler is an evidence-based approach to social-emotional learning. Research shows that learning about emotional influence assists with the growth of attention, memory and learning, decision-making, creativity, mental and physical well-being, the ability to form and maintain healthy relationships, and academic and workplace performance. I have experienced these results firsthand from my two doctors doing SEL at school. This curriculum teaches the skills of emotional intelligence that students can thrive in both healthier, more equitable, innovative, and compassionate communities. I've previously emailed you links to additional data supporting this information. Ruler was piloted at HPS in 2021, and there have been seven surveys conducted since then. All of these have received a majority vote to continue using, including the last survey that stated 72% of parents support SEL and 93% of teachers support SEL. The HPS website regarding Ruler states, while it's the school's role to teach academic context, it's also important for the school to support and explicitly teach social skills in order for students to apply their learning in a meaningful way. I'm extremely involved in the school, having been treasurer of the Bauer Parent Club for five years and serving as president this year and next. I can attest, we have amazing teachers who want the best for our students. Please listen to the 93% of teachers who support SEL, who are with our students daily, who have the education, expertise, and firsthand knowledge of this program's success. And this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. Any teacher in attendance today? Thank you. Thank you for being there for our children during the school days, helping them learn academically, socially, and emotionally. You are contributing to the creation of well-rounded individuals in the HPS school district, and one week is truly not enough to show the appreciation for all that you do. And to the Board, I'd like to remind you of item 13 of the HPS Board of Education Code of Conduct that states, "I will render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment and avoid under or judicial influence of outside groups." The Hudsonville community has members of loud voices. Being loud does not equate to gaining the majority. By voting no on continuing the SEL curriculum of Ruler, you are blatantly sending a message that you do not agree with the teachers' expertise and judgment, that you do not support 93% of the teachers who see these benefits firsthand. I ask that you respect and vote with the teachers to continue using the Ruler curriculum. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, we have our consent agenda. Motion. So, motion by Yorn.
Support.
Support from Andrew. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Consent agenda approved. First up on our regular action item is the SEL curriculum recommendation.
Thank you. So, plenty of feedback tonight from our community regarding the Ruler curriculum. We spent a couple of years in the pilot process evaluating. I know there's a number of PVI specialist department chairs, teachers in the audience tonight. I just want to thank you for your commitment to the process and taking care of our kids. We'll talk about teacher appreciation in a few minutes, but this was a heavy lift to take care of our kids on a daily basis. When some of our kids come in, a lot of, they need, they need support, and you've done a lot for them. I appreciate the modifications that you've made to Ruler per request from not only your internal process to the leadership for Board questions, specifically in the elementary school teaching guide for Ruler. It states, "We recognize, however, that educators know their students and they're setting best, and we welcome teachers to design their own lessons to meet the provided objectives if they feel so inclined." That's exactly what we did, and it is appreciated. I would like to also recognize our union leadership. There was a question about, from the Board, about the time our teachers had with the Ruler curriculum and the question format that came from administration. I did work with the union leadership and asked them, "Could you please maybe solicit information from staff so that it's not all administrative-driven, but more colleague-driven?" I'd like to address a couple of the data points there, just so you're aware. The first one is, do you believe that the expected 15, 20 minutes for teaching Ruler is just right, too much, or not enough? I think if we were to ask this question in year one, it would look different. We have a majority that said it's just right. We have a large group that does think it's too much. So this is a continued process of evolving curriculum. We do not feel like if approved tonight, that this work is done. We still have work to do, no matter what the outcome is this evening. Second question, based on the changes that this group of experts has made in the curriculum, do you find time for Ruler in your weekly schedule? And you can see 88% of our teachers said yes. With the work that they have done, it meets with their, their expectations for teaching in a, in a week, they would say. Number three, based on, we believe that time spent each week in Ruler is beneficial for your students in your classroom. You can see 73% say it is beneficial for the group of students that they have in their classroom. Number four, and this specifically addresses the conversation this evening, if the School Board were to make a decision with Ruler or in move, what would you rather do? And you can see 76% said they'd like to continue with Ruler, different than the 93% that was there before. But keep in mind, this is not the entire student, this entire population of elementary teachers. There were 93 responses out of roughly 126 teachers that we had at the elementary level. And then the last one was a little bit of an interesting question, was to talk about, do we find something else other than Ruler and stick with SOAR? I would remind the Board that SOAR is not a curriculum, it's not a social-emotional curriculum, it is a behavior expectation that we use in the district. So it's a little bit different conversation, but you can still see overwhelming support from our experts in the classroom that they support the Ruler curriculum. You were just reminded that we did send several surveys up to our, our community and our parents of kids that are in the elementary level over the past, well, past two years, but most recently, and a large majority of our parents do support Ruler in the classroom. So tonight, the recommendation to the Board of Education is that we would accept Ruler as our curriculum, as modified by our team, fully understanding that any future modifications may truly come before the Board if there are modifications that need to be made. If there are additional components of Ruler that are released in a future component, in a future release of Ruler, that would also come before the Board. This is no different than the curriculum evaluations that we do on all of our curriculum, thanks to our curriculum department, that that is reviewed on a regular basis. I will also remind the Board that as in other curriculum, if there are changes to what takes place in, whether it be society or there are other factors that play a role and we evaluate the curriculum, we could very easily find a new curriculum in the future that we would like to change to. I don't know if that's six months from now, six years from now, but those are conversations that are regularly reviewed. We are not here to tell you that this is a curriculum adoption that the district would use for the next 30 years and we won't revisit it. This is an adoption that we would look at and be forward, and that would say if there's something else that comes up, we do this with our science curriculum, we do this with math curriculum. Quite frankly, we've done it, we do it with our sex ed curriculum on a regular basis to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students at the current time, and so that would be an evaluation. So the recommendation tonight is for, to adopt Ruler as its curriculum for K5 only. We are not in the conversations for secondary yet, for 612. We'll have those conversations when we get there. This is for K5, as it's been modified further request of the Ruler guideline with the experts that are quite frankly here tonight, and that is the recommendation.
Okay, so the motion is that the Board approve the recommendation to adopt the Ruler curriculum as modified by the district for grades KU5 as presented by Dr. Vandercham.
I'll move in.
Motion by Ken. Support. Support by Dawn. Discussion.
Yes, Barb, I have some comments here. Can you assume you can hear me okay, okay? Okay. I have a number of concerns about Ruler that focus on its origins, its methodology, and its intended outcomes. Several in our community have spoken skillfully to these matters. One or more of my fellow Board members might also address them this evening. Even if I could put these concerns aside, which I cannot, I would still question the effectiveness of any program that brings a uniform approach to resolving the complexity of human emotions and social interactions, especially involving children. Issues of human emotions and social interactions can only be addressed effectively by skilled and compassionate adults working face-to-face every day with individual children. Apart from the program itself, I need to share my concerns about the process that has brought us to this place this evening. First, let me point out that the primary task of any leader is to bring a variety of people together, unite them behind a common vision, and move them forward. That is what good leaders do. The last thing any leader should do is create division. Ruler has brought more division into our district and to this Board than I have witnessed in all the days that I've lived in Hudsonville, Michigan. It is an ideological dissentant of Julian Newman's Culture Creative, which was employed by our district and abandoned years ago. Regardless of the merits or demerits of the program itself, it has damaged us, and it does not have the capacity to heal us. Our mission now should be to find an approach that will bring healing to our Board and to our district. Second, I'm troubled over the number of revisions that have already been made to this program simply as a pilot. I've heard numbers of something like 60%. That brings into question the wisdom of adopting the program that requires so many modifications to fit it to the Hudsonville community. If I bought a new home and had realized I needed to do a 60% remodel, I would question the wisdom of my original decision. Third, I want to speak to the suggestion that if we abandon Ruler as a pilot, we will be left with no means of addressing the social and emotional needs of our children, and they'll be left without any personal resources they need to cope with the uncertainties of daily life. A few years ago, I worked for a financial planning firm as a financial planner here in Hudsonville. My boss wanted me to sell investment products that produced high revenue for his department, and he suggested me, he suggested to me that I could sell more products if I would create a crisis for my customers, make them think that there would be ominous consequences if they did not purchase the product. That's a common technique of Madison Avenue. People with a sense of urgency are more likely to say yes even when it is not the best decision. To suggest that our children would be left adrift without Ruler is a created crisis. If we should put Ruler aside, we would still possess a wealth of resources for addressing the social and emotional needs of our students. We have a multi-layered system of safety nets remaining in place. First, we have classroom teachers who are highly skilled and deeply compassionate. They are the school's first line of defense in addressing social and emotional needs for our children. No program can do what these people have always been doing. Second, we have building principals and assistant principals who walk the halls and pop into classrooms and know students by name, and they have, they know a great deal more about the struggles of their students than they have been given credit for. They know their kids, and they are here because they care about kids. Third, we have a support staff, everyone from bus drivers to lunch people to custodians to safety officers and many others working in a variety of areas, people who care for our children. They are not here because they can't get jobs somewhere else. They are here because they want our children to be healthy and happy and successful and well-adjusted. Fourth, we have PVI specialist who can, who can address those complex issues that are beyond the capacity and skills of others. And fifth, and never forget this, fifth, we have parents who love their children more than life and will do whatever is needed to protect and develop them into healthy and productive adults. So refusing to adopt Ruler does not create a crisis. We should not adopt any program under that kind of baseless pressure. Fourth, it's been suggested that members of this Board are not qualified to make this decision and should humbly accept the recommendation of our highly qualified administrators. I'm not questioning the qualifications of our administrators. They are highly qualified, that's why they're working here. Nor am I pretending that all of us on this Board are educational experts. Our president is, but the rest of us probably are not. However, the real issue is about school governance in a free society. Laws of the state of Michigan do not provide that schools should be run by experts, but by laypeople within the local communities who are elected by their fellow citizens. The authority belongs to the lay Board, and it is an authority which this Board cannot abdicate without exposing the district to serious consequences. There are many reasons for lay governance of school Boards, not the least of which is this school district should reflect the values of the community in which those schools exist. It is possible that well-trained professionals could come to a district with values in direct conflict with the community they serve. That would create a chaotic situation. That is why the final decisions on matters of policy, curriculum, human resources, and finances rest with this body. A helpful parallel is the United States military. The head of the military is not some five-star general with deep knowledge and experience in warfare. The head of the military is the President of the United States, a layman. He might have military experience, or he might not. Either way, he is the Commander-in-Chief. The military generals can make recommendations, but the final decision in times of war and peace rests with the President. Students of history will recall that it was the very popular Second World War hero, General Douglas MacArthur, who forgot, who forgot that constitutional mandate when he served under President Harry Truman during the Korean War. Chief Justice Burger, in his dissenting opinion on Island Trees Union versus Pico, made this statement, "A school Board is not a giant bureaucracy far removed from accountability for its actions. It is truly of the people and by the people." Burger Justice Powell stated, "School Boards have only one responsibility, the education of the youth of our country during their most formative and impressionable years. It is fair to say that no single agency of government at any level," says the justice, "is closer to the people whom it serves than the typical school Board." Of course, it must be said that the one authority higher than this Board is the parents of the children, which brings us back to Michigan, and as our state's revised School Code Act 451, which states, "It is the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine the care, teaching, and education of their children." The public schools of the state serve the needs of the people, of the pupils by cooperating with pupils' parents and legal guardians to develop the pupils' intellectual capabilities and vocational skills in a safe and positive environment. So it is this Board which must be convinced of the validity and safety of Ruler. We can read the emails, listen to the public comments, study the surveys, respect the advice of our administrators. We can and should do all of that, but in the end, we must decide, and we are the ones who will be held accountable for that decision. Thank you.
So for me, Ruler is, this whole discussion around SEL and Ruler is around student achievement, and how do we enable students through building confidence, through, through building relationships, through being able to, to function effectively to the best of their ability in our schools? How do we enable students to be the best that they can be, to take it not just academically, academic was part of it, but also to take... academic was part of it, but also to make the most of their years in school, to try taking that pottery class they never thought that they could do, to try things and experience things without the burden of troubled relationships that they may have to deal with, without the burden of some of the issues that we have in middle school and high school that we're all familiar with, we're all familiar with, and enable them to really grow and develop and be their best. That's what I believe this discussion is about, and that's what I believe our parents really want for their students, help my student be the best that she or he can be. And I know that's what our teachers want for our students. So my perspective is this is a discussion around that. Now, I say that not to diminish some of the comments of fact that we heard tonight, that there are parents that are like, "I'm struggling with this aspect of it. I'm struggling with my child heard in school today and brought home to me." And I would expect that our administrative team and our teachers are addressing those in an appropriate manner, to say, "Okay, we have a student that's struggling with this or that aspect of it. We need to address that. We need to take care of that. We need to listen to that student. We need to listen to that parent, and we need to address that situation." Every situation will be different with every student. But having read all the material, having read articles about the background of Ruler, having looked at all the videos, having gone and talked to principals, and talked to teachers, having seen Ruler applied in classrooms, both here at Hudsonville and with some of my own grandkids, not Ruler exactly, but the same approach, it's the same basic thing, it strikes me that our parents and our teachers, the majority, are saying, "This is the tool that will enable, this is an approach that will enable our students to be the best that they can be while they're in the care of public schools." And so that's where I'm at. And again, our teachers, I fully trust our teachers. The data is pretty clear where our teachers are at, where our parents are at, and I know that our teachers and our principals will do their absolute best. I'm not concerned about Marxist creeping into the classroom and so forth. I have way more trust in our teachers and our principals than that, and I know that they'll do their best, and will tweak and will modify, and will continue to make the program the best that it can be to enable our students to be the best that they can be, which is the expectation of everyone in this district, starting with parents, but also with teachers, administrators, this board. So that's it. My comments on Ruler.
Other comments?
Yes, I listened to Mr. Hall and to Mr. Davis, and I've done a lot of research myself on this. And this is not a vote for or against teachers. This is not a vote for or against parents. This is a vote having to do what's best for our children. And I've read from a couple of different individuals, actually several, who are in the SCL movement programs, and they say this, "There's no such thing as a values-neutral, social, emotional learning program." There isn't. They're all pushing an agenda, and you may agree with the agenda, or you may disagree with the agenda. But to not understand that, in my opinion, is being naive. And so as a board member, I am looking at those things, and I want to know what the agendas are for the folks that are writing these curriculums. And I would encourage you to go look at the background of Mr. Brackett and go look at the background of one of his lieutenants, who was on board for seven years in building this Ruler curriculum, and see where they're coming from. See what they do in their spare time. See what their talks are all about. And then ask yourself, "Is this the kind of individual that I want influencing a program within our district?" And some people in this room may say, "I absolutely want that." Some may say, "I absolutely want to stay as far away from that as I possibly can." But that's a decision that each and every one of the adults in this room have to make. Those of us sitting up at this table have a little bit more of a decision to make because we were elected, and we were asked to take care of these situations, and we were asked to study and to look at what was going on, and that's what all of us have done. Those people who agree with me or disagree with me, I am sure they have done their homework, and I'm sure they have looked at everything. I have talked to several principals for several hours, men and women that I have a lot of respect for, and they have changed my mind on certain things. When I was first elected, I was no Ruler and no SCL. But after talking with these men who are in education, I believe that there is a place for SCL if we can find the right program for Hudsonville. When we have to change sixty percent of any program, it's not the right program. Our PBS specialists, PBIS specialists are fantastic people from what I understand, and I appreciate all they've done for trying to take this program and customize it for Hudsonville. But there's got to be something that's a little bit closer to where we're at in Hudsonville than having to do all that other stuff. Our last speaker articulately raised up something, saying ninety-three percent of the teachers approve of Ruler. That number has jumped in the last year from fifty-six to sixty-four to ninety-three. And when I'm looking at those surveys and I'm looking at how they're worded, that can add ten or twelve or fifteen points to any survey. But it was fascinating, utterly fascinating for me to see the latest survey that ninety-three out of the hundred and twenty-four K through fifth-grade teachers took, a survey that was commissioned by the HEA, a survey that I think the results were available on April twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-three, and I am just receiving today as a board member. I should have had this stuff two weeks ago so I could look at it and clearly understand what it said. But you know what? I can look at it and clearly understand what it says. Question five: If you personally, through a teacher, were making the decision about SCL in Hudsonville for the entire district, would you rather continue with Ruler as you're currently using your typical day or week? Now, remember, six months ago, ninety-three percent of these folks said they loved Ruler. It's down to sixty-two point four percent. Now, you could say, "Well, Greg, that's the way the question was asked." Making my point. Fifty-six percent to ninety-three percent to sixty-two point four percent. What's going on? I don't understand how we could have lost so much momentum. These are the same folks who fill out the other survey. So what I'm saying is, folks, that there's a lot of different ideas on what we should do here. This is not a vote against teachers. This is not a vote against principals. This is not about trust or distrust. You know, I want to commend every speaker here tonight, because no matter what side of the issue you were on, you were very respectful in what you said. But in the past, I've had people come up to me, and basically, if I disagreed with them, they equated that to hate. Just because someone has a different opinion than you does not mean that they hate you. And if I disagree with you, it doesn't mean that I hate you. It means that I disagree with you, and I think differently about a subject. So with everything that I've looked at, with all the surveys, which are all over the place, with the teachers telling me this, and principals who I respect telling me this, I'm looking at this, and my conscience has to tell me to vote no. Now, I don't think Ruler's the thing for us. There might be a better one out there, and I would expect that Dr. Vanderjack and his team will find that and will bring it to us, and we will be united in finding something that everybody can agree on and live with. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'd just like to speak. I'd agree with you, Greg. I don't think anybody's so sure what's going to happen tonight, and I'm actually really encouraged by the dialogue. This is still Hudsonville, and I'm proud to be an Eagle. Obviously, we have people from different sides came up to speak. There's a lot of wisdom that came out of several people from different sides. These are complex issues that we're dealing with. Ruler's not the savior for any of it. I believe, based upon the hours that I've spent meeting principals, teachers, both in our district and out of district, I've got friends in several districts around here asking, "What are you doing? What's working for you?" I don't think there's a perfect solution out there. I don't think it exists. I really don't. When we look at the survey results, there are very strong opinions. I wish there was a perfect answer. I wish there was a perfect option. I don't think we're going to find it. To me, it boils down to the people. Now, as I look out here, I've got family members who are teachers. I've got friends here that are teachers. I have former teachers out here. I don't trust anybody more than you to teach our kids. This is a very complex world that we're raising our kids in. It's getting more complex by the day. I believe emotional intelligence becomes more important every day with technology, with the lack of face-to-face interaction. The leaders in our society going forward will have the emotional skills that not everybody will have. This is not an easy vote for any of us. Our community needs healing. It's been a really difficult couple of years. Tonight's not going to fix everything. I'm encouraged, though, by the dialogue and the conversation that we're going to add in the right direction tonight, regardless of how this goes down. I truly respect and appreciate the opinions that I've heard. Again, I echo your concern. You know, when we hear of children that have been negatively impacted by this, as a professional in the mental health field for years, fifteen years, that bothers me. But again, I trust, as I've gotten to know, that the best thing about being in this position here the last few months is I get to spend time in the schools. I can just go into a school, and I can go into a classroom. I wish everybody in this room tonight had the opportunity that we have. You would be amazed at the things that are going on in our buildings. We have phenomenal teachers. To Mark's point, teachers teaching in Hudsonville choose to teach. They know our community. They could go anywhere else. They choose to be here, knowing all the ins and outs of our community. That's why I trust them, and I trust the leadership. You know, I'm thankful that you and the curriculum team will say, "We're going to continue to look." Again, this is not the end tonight. So yeah, I'm super encouraged about where we're going, incredibly thankful, the leadership in our buildings, our teachers, and our PBS specialists. You've done phenomenal work. You do it every day. Know you're going to continue to do it as well. Again, there's things to work on. A lot of things are beyond Ruler that we need to continue to work on as a community, and we're going to do this together. I really believe that, so that's what I have to say.
First, I want to thank everyone who has taken the time to email me over the past few days and months. I have read all of your emails, and there have been a lot. This week, I have not responded to the majority of them because there's just been a lot. I have also spent hours reviewing data that has been provided to the board, and I have reviewed parts of the original and the modified curriculum. I spent a lot of time last night looking at stuff, and I've actually lost a lot of sleep over this. I also want to thank the administrative team for answering all of my questions because I have asked a lot. Since our original review in February of two thousand and twenty-two, the PBIS specialists have done a lot of work on Ruler by heavily modifying it into something more suitable for our students and community. I know you have spent many hours looking on Ruler, and I want to recognize you and thank you for that hard work. I also want to recognize our teachers. We have outstanding teachers in our district. That's what makes our district so great, and I am grateful for everything that you do. I know your job is not easy, and this vote is not about a support or a decline from the teachers. You do an outstanding job every day, and I'm grateful for that. I know how hard it is. This does lead me to ask, though, why we are approving a curriculum that needed so much modification to meet the needs of our students and community. First is that a good use of our resources. Would it be better to take a brief pause and review SCL curriculums that would meet the needs of all students without having to undergo such significant modifications? I believe there are programs out there. I remember talking to a PBIS specialist that had recommendations. This survey was distributed to the teachers, and support for Ruler has decreased almost twenty percent since the last survey. I'm saddened that we're just receiving this. I received it this yesterday, but my fellow board members received it half hour ago. A question was asked that if you personally, meaning the teacher, were making the decision about SCL in Hudsonville for the entire district, thirty-seven point seven percent of the teachers would either find a new SCL curriculum or just get rid of Ruler and not select a new SCL curriculum. This is concerning. That's over a third. I appreciate people bringing different perspectives to the meetings and helping to inform the board. I was elected because of what I promised, and while the significantly modified version of Ruler is better than it was in February of two thousand and twenty-two, I am ultimately concerned with the number of modifications made, and after reviewing the modified curriculum, I'm again asking myself, "Why are we not evaluating other SCL curriculums? There are better programs we could implement, especially when one-third of the teachers from April twenty-third on the survey did not support Ruler." So let me put that in perspective. If you walk through any of the hallways of our elementary schools, whether it be Forest Grove South or Georgetown, just to name a few, for every three classrooms that you pass, we have one classroom has a teacher who wants to get rid of Ruler or not use SCL at all. I support all of our teachers, but I do find the statistic of thirty-seven point seven percent concerning. Instead, I would like to see a program that focuses on character, including trustworthiness, dependability, loyalty, perseverance, and self-management skills, all of which will help students succeed and navigate the complex world that we live in. SCL is not required by the state. It is recommended. Thus, I would like to pause for a bit and review what other options are available for our students. When you look at curriculum, when you purchase anything, you are given everything that you need. Where it becomes very time-intensive is when you have to start to make a lot of modifications. I do support S E L, but I want to support it I do support SEL, but I want to support an SEL program that also fosters teaching characteristics that are important for all students to have as they navigate their future, and not one that is so controversial that it requires significant modification to be suitable. This community needs to heal. This board needs to heal. There are other options out there, and there will have to be compromise on both ends of the spectrum, and I believe we can get there. In closing, I am very grateful to the families who have reached out to me to share both their positive and negative experiences their children have had with Ruler. I am deeply concerned with students who have been negatively impacted by it, and I have the emails to share with you. It is these emails that are keeping me awake at night, and I would like to do better moving forward. Thank you.
Other comments?
I was just looking at Dawn because I wasn't sure if she was going to say anything or not. Dr. Vanderjack, is the soar data publicly available after recent sort of?
The board reviewed it on Monday night, and then they'll give that.
Am I able to share any information?
I'll wait until Monday night to request the board. Unless, yeah, I don't know if the board looked at all of that. They're discussing it. I'll check with the board at the meeting, but we'll discuss that on Monday night.
Yeah, from my perspective, I've also lost some sleep over this as well. I know we all think this very, very seriously. I think this district and the teachers here, including Mrs. Greenland over there. I'm a little emotional back. It may be do I have today. And it's the great teachers have a special place in my heart, and I know that there are. These are complex issues. These are complex times. Our kids are going through things that, things now, my children themselves are, my children are going through things now that I never thought I would, you know, or I never did with anyone else their age. To me, this is not about political agendas. This is not about right versus left. This is not about faith versus not. This is about in the best interest of our kids. And this is about what the experts say about social-emotional learning and about Ruler. And from a political perspective, we're not here, we're not here to push an agenda, whether it's left or right, or red or blue. We're here to serve this district. We're here to serve this community, and we're here to do the best for our kids, period. And there are, I think, a number of members of this community who, frankly, I share a lot of, from a political perspective, from a faith perspective, I share a lot of the same commonality, a lot of the same, you know, sentiments that they do. And some I certainly disagree with. But at the end of the day, this is not what this, that's not what this is about. That's not why we're all up here. At least, it's not why we should be up here. We're not here to push an agenda. We're here to do what's right for kids. And we're here to support our teachers and administrators in a way that's going to make this place the best school that it can be. And for it to be the place, then I'm proud to have my kids get a part of, and then I'm proud to have been, you know, raised in. And so, I, it pains me to hear some of the difficulties that certain students have had being exposed to this curriculum. But to Kat's point and others, I think that there's a way for us to move ahead with this curriculum that is, that is good for all students and that this is in the best interest of the district. I apologize for being emotional, but this is, it's the way I am. And just, I guess, one last point. I manage 63 people. I'm the director of our group. When I look at, especially some of the younger people that we've hired recently, and I look at what sets those people apart from their peers, and I look at high performers, high achievers, it's the people that can relate to one another, and to see people eye to eye, that makes a difference. I can hire smart people with great degrees and good GPAs all day long, but what I can't find always is people who know how to connect to one another, and I think that this curriculum does that.
Thank you, Andrew. I appreciate your comments, and I think I would agree with pretty much everything you said. Having been in this community my whole life, our family being raised here, our kids going here, I get sentimental, thinking that it would be great if my kids and my grandkids could experience what I experienced. And I know that's maybe where Mark was coming from, but I also know that this world is not the same. I think of students that I went to school with who did not have support at home, who did not have parents who loved them enough to teach them. And I wonder sometimes today during this process, what happened to those students? Because I know how they were treated, and outside of having a supportive teacher, none of us were told to maybe think about how someone else was feeling. I learned that at my church. I learned that from my family. But unfortunately, in the world we live in, that's not the case in every family. And it's a tough world. It's a tough world. And I rely very heavily on my children who have children. Talk to them about this. Talk to what their kids are dealing with. And the social-emotional component and understanding words and what words mean is a whole lot different than encouraging bad behavior. And I think that is something that has been said time and time again, that it is telling kids to have these wrong emotions. From what I've seen, it helps them to understand what that means and then to proceed to figure out how to either correct or deal with those emotions. And so, I feel for the families who have children that maybe came to them with Ruler. Are there special circumstances? Yes. Should we have our support? And should we do whatever we can to encourage meetings with counselors, their counselors as well as school counselors? And the teachers to see what's what we can do? Yes, because every child does matter. I came from a family that has always lived here, had extended family, but I know that's special. I know now that that's not the situation that we come from, and our school needs to be here to continue to support students who didn't have what I had growing up.
Just say one last thing. I think we've heard from a lot of different perspectives, and I just want the board to know that whatever we do decide, we're all in this together, and we're all here to serve our community and to do what's best for our kids. And I'm committed to doing that.
Any other comments? Motion on table, I will do a roll call of the battle call, Nick Bullhouse?
Oh, yes.
Greg Schinze?
No.
Mark Davis?
No.
Andrew Dillard?
Yes.
Ken Hall?
Yes.
Mark Cooper, no. Dylan Smeaton?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Next up on our agenda is our Chromebook purchase recommendation. Mr. Briggs.
Thank you. That is exciting of a presentation coming up here. So, the board reviewed this in detail at the work session. I'll just go over the recommendation briefly and take any questions. So, a recommendation is to purchase 1,750 Chromebooks from People Driven Technology Environment Center for $407,791. That purchase will be, if approved, will be funded by the bond fund. So, are there any questions?
Please, that we have, that the board approved the recommendation to purchase 1,750 Dell Chromebooks, the People Driven Technology. Their total amount was $407,791, and it's presented by Mr. Patrick Briggs. Other questions for Mr. Briggs? My new motion, sorry. So, support by Andrew. Now, we can have questions.
All the same numbers passed, would you please?
Yes.
All right. Hearing no more questions, all in favor say yes. Any opposed in sign? Motion passes. Next up is our copier bid recommendation. Mr. Briggs, I, this is you as well.
Thank you. Yes, so our consultants, CBD, along with our tech director, tech department, and several other people were involved in our B process to select the best copier partner moving forward. They have, they have done that, and the recommendation is to move forward with the same vendor we've used for the last five years with great success in the district for all of our existing buildings. Applied Innovation of Grand Rapids. It has the total amount for five years on there, but the monthly loss will be $15,183.67.
Okay, so we have that the board approved a contract for Applied Innovation in the amount of $901,020.20. Payable in 16-month installments for a new network document imaging system as presented by Mr. Patrick Briggs. Motion?
I'll leave that.
Motion by Mark Davis?
Support.
Support by Nick. Questions for Mr. Briggs? Will we leave this in the work session? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Both same sign? All right. Mr. Briggs, our radio contract recommendation.
Thank you. Once again, this was also reviewed in detail in the work session. We had two bidders in our project. We are not recommending the low bidder. The bidder that is, the bidder we're recommending is going to make some needed engineering changes to our system, and they have a proven track record to make those, make those changes with great success. So, the recommended approval amount is $285,042 for, we call it MCA, but Mobile Communications of America. The only modification I have, it's really not a modification, but it's new news, is instead of this being a bond-funded project, we learned through the, through the great work of our district security director, Mike Trulia, and our grants manager, Leslie Bullhouse, that they believe we can get this funded by a grant. So, Lindsey, sorry, not Leslie, Lindsey, but they believe that this can be grant-funded, which will preserve bond funds. So, through their great work, that's the only modification I have in the original recommendation, that it not be bond-funded. There's, if we can get it funded by the grant, that would be our, our preference.
Just for clarification, if Max is at $285,000 funding, whatever can be pulled out of grant will be, will slot.
Yes.
I'll say that we have the board approve a contract with Mobile Communications of America in the amount of $285,042 for reconfiguration and expansion of the district's existing radio communication system as presented by Mr. Patrick Briggs. Motion, please. So, a motion by Dawn?
Support.
Support by Andrew. Any questions for Mr. Briggs?
I'm not sure I understand. So, the grant would be?
So, we have a grant that can cover a large majority of many insecurity things that are taking, radios fault under that. The other components that we're working on making modifications that we will discuss in a public work session because of security measures with the board, but that could fall under some component that could fall under the grant. We can get it covered under the grant. If not, we'll cover, cover under the bond.
So, some under the grant, some under the bond.
Worst case, it's all under the bond. Either way, none of it's covered under operation.
Correct. Thank you.
Will you let us go the old code?
I will, as soon as the state lets me. I'll be asked.
Other questions? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed same sign?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Mrs. Ann Armstrong. We have a lot of human resource, I notice.
Well, you guys are, yeah, it's my season. Yeah. So, I first have a recommendation to the board for hires, so I'd like to go through those recommendations. First, we have Devin Doublestein, and I have her stand. Devin is a graduate, a recent graduate of Grand Valley State University, but she's still a student because she's getting her master's specifically in autism spectrum disorder. But she started doing a long-term student teaching with us in January due to a need that we had at Baldwin Middle School. She stood out immediately. We fell in love with her passion for kids, her hard work ethic, and her collegialism. And so, when we knew that we needed a teacher for the 56 building, we, I went to her in the cafeteria, and I was like, Devin, you want a job? And she said, yeah, I'm not. So, I'm very excited for Devin to be part of the team. Next, I have Colin Davis. Colin has an interesting story with us as well. Colin was completing his social work internship at Alward Elementary School, and he was set to work with a fellow social worker, and then there was a baby that decided to come a little bit earlier. And so, Colin went from being the intern to a little more hands-on, and he has done an amazing job, and he really shined. He has such a calm, amazing demeanor about himself, very, very service-oriented. I mean, I couldn't think of a better job for Colin. I looked and looked. I don't think he's here right now. But so, anyway, so Colin Davis is going to be recommended for social work. Then we have Leah Zabka. Wow. Yep. Zabka? That's how we say it. And I apologize to Leah. I put you on the phone when I talked to her as well. But Leah is a new mom to a four-month-old, and her husband works at night, and so she is unable to join us tonight. But she did say thank you so much for this recommendation, but she has been a speech path at two different districts, most recently in Traverse City, but their family relocated to this area, and she's going to take a .5 speech pathologist position next year. And then finally, we have Bell Mira Walston, which she goes by Bell. And Bell is currently finishing up her school year in Virginia. She's a fourth-grade teacher, and we're recommending her for fourth grade at South. And she's a CMU grad originally from Traverse City, has been teaching fourth grade for three years in Virginia and wants to come back to the area. And we had a, she has a friend that we just recently hired for a resource here at the high school, Rachel Caswell, that was like, Bell, this is the best district ever. You have to apply. And Mark and I really enjoyed Bell immediately when we met her. So, we are excited to recommend her for hire. So, I bring those four candidates for hire to the board. Dr. Cooper?
I think we're going to take action on all the human resource.
Can we do the new hires separately? Or do the retirees?
Okay, all right. Then, that the board approved the new hires as presented by Mrs. Ann Armstrong. New motion?
I want to.
Motion by Andrew?
Support.
Support by Nick. All right. Any questions for Ann?
Fourth grade at South.
South, yes.
All right. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Both same sign? All right. New hires are all on board. Welcome.
So, this next round, technically, you don't have to take action. I know you like to, but they already, you know, put their letter in. But Dr. Vanderjack, Dr. Cooper, I would invite you guys to come down so that you can give a handshake as well. I am going to invite our building principals to come up to say some kind words and congrats to these retirees. These are not all of our retirees. I've done this in June. I've done this in May. I can't, I don't know what the good month to do is, so I apologize. But first, I'd like to invite Principal of the High School, Jordan Wheel, up to the microphone to say a few words about the retirees from the high school.
Armstrong, good evening, board. And I'm going to first talk about Mrs. Elizabeth Box, who is retiring this year. who is retiring this year from Hudsonville High School after having been a teacher there since the nineteen ninety-ninety-one school year, where she was hired by my father. So it's kind of fun that, uh, I get to speak about her retirement tonight, and he hired her a long time ago. Mrs. Box has always been a staple here. Even I remember when I was, uh, just a little kid running around the building here. And I'd like to point out that she's here tonight with her husband, which is, uh, Mayor Box. And I joke that she's the first lady of Holland, and they're missing two of the time tonight. So it's a big deal that they're here tonight. So thank you for being here, also Mayor Box. Um, I guess the, the thing, it's hard to kind of break down in just a short time. Yeah, you can go over there, so I can see you while I'm talking. Thank you. Uh, it's hard to break down in such a short time, uh, how much she's meant to the high school and to all of her students. Though I never had a chance to have her as a student, a lot of my friends that, they always talked about how she was their favorite. Uh, I wish I'd have taken life reading still. Um, but she's been here in our PE department for all this time, and she's had such an impact and left such a legacy because of who she is. Uh, her heart for students, her heart for children, her passion for being healthy and active is palpable. Um, I love being down in her area of the building, in this older part of the, of the building. We were kind of joking about, uh, back when she was hired, there were just the two hallways, which I remember just this front hallway and the one back behind us here, and that was it. Uh, so it's been quite something probably to see this, this school grow and the community grow in her time here. Um, most importantly, the thing that I'm going to remember the most, I think, is watching Elizabeth lead and teach in our adapted PE program. And those of you that have been to our special Olympics basketball or ever been around fifth hour in the gym with all of our links and paraprofessionals, you would get to see a master at work, uh, with our children and, and helping manage all of the support staff. Uh, but then really, it's all because of love. I'll just say that we have for our students and that Elizabeth exists every single day. You're going to be missed. She is becoming a grandmother in June, and so it's really good timing. I know she's going to, when we talk about her retirement, um, she just glows about talking about that new chapter in her life. Uh, and of course, being the first lady of Holland, she's going to still fill up her days with whatever she wants. And so, um, I wish you all the best. I'm going to miss you dearly. And it's an honor to get to, to be here tonight to talk about you. So I wish you all the best for retirement, so thank you for everything you've done for us.
I better see you up in the pent water, Miss Box.
Next, I'd like to say a couple of words, um, about our next retiree, Sheila Braddale. I'm going to invite Mr. Ross to come up here as well. Um, as Sheila spent a lot of her career at both of our middle schools and, uh, an Eagle Virtual during the time that we needed staff to step up into Eagle Virtuals. So what I can say from Sheila's short time at the high school, um, I really appreciate how she stepped up and took on a new challenge, uh, taking on algebra. She came here, she joined the math department, um, and you've just been such a, a great presence for our students and a kind presence. And I think our students are going to miss, uh, your, your warm heart and your, your, just the desire to take on, you know, something you hadn't taught before and moving up to the high school here. You've just been a really great addition to our department. So I wish I'd have got to work with you longer. Uh, it's been a real pleasure, so thank you for everything, Sheila. And I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Ross as well, so thank you.
Good evening, President Hooper, members of the board. Uh, I'll continue where Jordan left off. I did work, work with Sheila for a long time, uh, almost twelve years at Riley Street. Uh, Sheila was, uh, just a good teammate. I think her colleagues would share. She's somebody that was reliable, dependable. Uh, we talk in this world of collaboration and doing the work together. Sheila was the person that was always willing to do the work together. Sheila also did things outside of the school day for us. She coached our volleyball teams, and when she stopped coaching volleyball, she would raise her hand and she would work the volleyball table. She enjoyed being around our kids. Jordan mentioned this, in the fall of twenty-twenty, we opened a virtual school, and Sheila raised her hand and stepped up and was a part of that. Sheila and I have some fond memories. My first few years at Riley Street, I, I got to know Sheila well because parent-teacher conferences were always supposed to end at about eight o'clock. And Sheila's line was so long, we didn't get done until about nine, nine-thirty. So Sheila and I would wait with Sheila, and we would walk out, um, together. Uh, Sheila was my, my son's sixth-grade math teacher. So he's a high school graduate from Hudsonville, twenty-eighteen, and a college graduate. So thank you, Sheila, uh, for the work you did. Thank you to, to all the teachers that have impacted my children. But, um, Sheila, and we've stayed in touch since you've left Riley Street. I, I wish you well. I know family is important to you, and I know you're looking forward to having more time to do that, so thank you. I'm also going to mention two staff members from Riley who are also retiring, but, um, were not able to be here tonight. Many of you know Matt Tanis. Matt Tanis, who prior to coming to Riley Street, uh, was a teacher at Forest Grove Elementary School. Uh, he probably still shares that with the kids today, especially those that come from Forest Grove. Uh, Matt, uh, will have served this district for thirty years, uh, teaching primarily middle school math, uh, and for a long time was Sheila's partner at Riley Street Middle School. Matt's also been a very successful tennis coach here, uh, at Hudsonville, uh, coaching both our boys varsity tennis program and our girls JV program. So, uh, Matt, if you've ever been around his classroom, Matt is all about relevancy. He always tells the kids, I'm going to teach you this, and you're going to need to know this in seventh grade, or you'll need to know this in ninth grade. And it's just a skill that Matt had to let kids know what they regarded was important, which sometimes can be challenging in math, convincing an eleven-year-old of that. So, uh, Matt has been skilled at that. Another one of my colleagues who will be retiring is Kelly Yokum. Um, if your former, uh, board member Larry Cappinga was here, Larry would probably tell you Kelly was the best student teacher he ever had at Park Elementary School. Uh, Kelly also has served this district for thirty years, uh, most recently as a middle school art teacher. She had a unique degree. She was a math teacher and an art teacher. So seven years ago, we called on her to move and do a, an art role, and she's just excelled at that. Kelly, one thing I, I'll share about Kelly that I admire and appreciate, Kelly was about the struggling learner as a math teacher. And the thing with math teachers, math teachers were always good math students. Kelly had this ability to connect with students who struggled and help them understand that. Kelly always made herself available for students before school, after school, and lunch, and truly is a professional, uh, teacher. And she'll be missed as well. So again, on behalf of Kelly and Matt, thank you, um, for acknowledging them this evening.
Good evening, board, with Dr. Van Jack. Um, I am going to talk about one of my retiring teachers tonight, Mrs. Shar Grayman. Um, I don't want to get all, get too emotional about it either, but, um, I know Andrew did a little bit earlier when he looked at Shar, um, which is easy to do. Um, Shar has been teaching for thirty-eight years, uh, thirty-five of them at Hudson Public. And she has been all through the district. She's taught special ed at Park. Um, she taught kindergarten, first and second grade at Bauer, and she's taught second, third, and fourth at Georgetown. Uh, my first year at Georgetown, she was just moving to third grade. And I joked with her, since we've gotten to know each other and I got to know the building a little bit, that she was trying to get away from, uh, or try to find maybe a quieter hallway, is what I can say then, one of her former fourth-grade colleagues. And, and I really think it's just that she's constantly striving to learn new things and, and try different things. And there's not many teachers that are willing to do that thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six years into their tenure. And that's just who she is. Um, she's incredibly warm, she's incredibly welcoming. Um, I know we talked a lot about SCL and things like that tonight. I just think, not that every teacher doesn't have issues in their classroom, but I feel like she doesn't have as many because kids don't want to disappoint her. And she is just amazing, and there you go in, everything's calm. And the kids are engaged, and they're interacting with each other and with her, and that's just what she sets up for them. Um, in addition to her time with us, she spent six different summers working with teachers in Haiti. Um, this summer, she's going to work with, um, teachers in Cambodia, um, helping them learn how to become better teachers. And that's probably my biggest takeaway. Our number one thing is obviously the students, but it's so important. We have so many new and young teachers every year, and to see Shar give and give and give to them, too. It's just amazing. Um, I joked with her before, and I'm a little disappointed in what Ann said earlier. I didn't know that you guys didn't actually have to go ahead of this, because I told her I wasn't sure if I was going to recommend that you accept a resignation or not, but I guess I, I can't really lobby against that at this point. Um, but if I could, I would ask you not to accept it because I'm really going to miss her. Um, she's amazing, but I know that she's looking forward to some grandma time, um, as well. And so I'm happy for her, happy for that. But we will definitely miss her. So congratulations, Shar.
It was a long time ago.
I don't know that, I didn't disappoint you. I may have disappointed you. I was a little bit of a hint. Next, we'll have Mr. Heel.
Good evening, everyone. We'll continue the celebrations as Mrs. Kayler is not here tonight, so I can make up whatever I want. So Diane Kayler has also been in our district for a number of years. And, um, one of the things that I tease her about is I don't know how in the world she's lasted this long because her room is filled with green and white. And we are not green and white. But somehow, we can carry on this little banter. Um, I have a Friday communication that I send out to staff, and sometimes I just put a little Go Blue or, you know, uh, Go Eagles in there just to disrupt the MSU flow that comes from her room. Uh, but she is one of the few people that I've ever met, although everyone has this quality to some degree, that just exudes South Elementary School. Uh, she has been there basically her entire career. She has moved three times with three South Elementary Schools, and still comes to work with a smile. She is one of those people who can balance, um, going out and playing soccer and leading intramurals with our fourth and fifth-grade kids, and at the same time, having that compassion uh, for the kids who really don't care anything about sports at all. Uh, she is about life through and through. It's not only about content, it's about the person and the student. It's about helping them become a better self as they move into fifth grade. And she does that with her colleagues as well. Uh, every time, uh, and I try to do this with Diane's, um, okay, approval, every time we talk a little bit about transition, her two teammates just start crying. And I feel like the worst person in the world is we try to think about, we just approved, uh, Bell Walston tonight, who will be, um, filling that gap. We never replace people. And that's one thing that with Diane, you just don't replace Diane Kayler. But we need to fill that spot. When we talk a little bit about Bell and, and although they're excited about what she'll bring to our team, Diane is just the epitome of self. And so we hope that she, um, comes back and visits us a little bit. Uh, but I also know that she has some incredible plans. Uh, she'll probably be at the pickleball courts just about every day, more than one time a day. Uh, but she has taught me a lot about what it is to serve and to stay with something and to persevere. And so we'll miss her a great deal, but we wish her very well. So if she could be here this evening, if you get a chance, shoot her an email. She's a wonderful person.
Good evening, board. Dr. Van Jack, thank you for allowing me to be here today to have the pleasure of recognizing Pam Lyman and her service that she's had here at Hudsonville. She's been here for nineteen years. She's in her nineteenth year, and she taught previously before. And if you kind of do the math on that, that means that she's had at least four hundred and seventy-five students come through her classroom, which is just an amazing thing that she has impacted so many lives of students in such a positive way. You know, I've only worked with Pam for one year, but even in this year, she's invited me into her classroom to celebrate the success of her students. And the genuine joy that I see in her face when her students are presenting a research paper or they're doing, um, a presentation, a lot of verbal and oral representation, it's just exciting to see. The kids are so excited, but then you look over and you see Pam's face, and she's just being me because she's so proud of her students. And it's just such a cool thing to see, especially this year in our fourth grade. Um, we have a new teacher, and she's helped with that mentorship of that new teacher and being able to kind of pass the torch on to her in this education. Um, you know, we have an incredibly supportive climate at Allward. It's been a joy to serve there, and Pam has been a huge part of that. And, you know, educating kids through COVID and maintaining positivity, especially in, you know, the last year of her career. And I, I'm incredibly inspired when I walk through the fourth-grade hallway to know that this is her last year, and yet she's still putting it all in and working with students and doing positive behavior plans with students in creative ways and meeting students where they are and coming and collaborating with a team of, hey, I have this kid, what works best for them? What did you do last year? And also just thinking about, all right, we're setting them up for next year at the five-six building. What can we do that's best for this kid? And I just, I'm inspired by that, and I hope that all of us who are in education, um, feel the same way about our students and our passion in our last year that she does. And so I'm just blessed that I was able to work with her for at least one year. I wish I could have worked more with her, but I just wish her all the best in this next chapter of her retirement life. Um, and so I'm going to pass it on to our Baldwin Middle School principal, Ryan Crete.
I think we started a trend in that our people are not here this late in the evening. Um, I am, uh, here to recognize and celebrate Amy Smith, um, who taught for twenty-two years in Hudsonville Public Schools in our resource department. Um, Amy is, is a culture person, really. She's been heavily involved in, um, Baldwin Middle School for years. Um, and her presence with her students, she's like our school mother. students, she's like our school mother. We joke every, every day, usually she's like, "Creep, your tie's crooked, hair's disheveled, what's wrong with you?" So, you know, I'm gonna miss dearly just the, the honesty and the passion that she brings to not only our kids, but just the pride in being an Eagle, and being a Baldwin Eagle, and what that means to our building. She is not one that's shy to say how she's feeling or what's on her mind, but it always tends to drive all of our work and what we do, and we will miss that dearly. She's definitely poured in for, for years into our kids and our special ed program, and has really built meaningful relationships with our kids and prepared them well for high school and beyond. So she wouldn't come to this even if I drug her in her by her arm. So I just thank you for the opportunity to talk about her, because she's an awesome colleague, and it has been my pleasure to work with her for the last two years. Thank you.
Alright, sadly, that's my recommendation for retirement. So thank you, and I will let you take a motion for that, Dr. Hooper.
Okay, we will take a motion to accept all of our retirements, unfortunately.
So?
By Nick.
No offense.
Support by?
Reluctantly supportive here.
By Andrew. Alright, any discussion on the retirements?
We need, we need substitutes, right?
Yes, actually nine months, then they can come back.
Alright, all in favor say yes. Yes, that's the closing sign. Alright, our retirements are good to go. Alright, Dr. Vanderjack, we are up to board policy updates and revisions for the second reading.
Thank you. The second reading for policies, you see them listed on your form, I received no additional communication regarding questions or changes, so these are exactly the same as the first reading, so it is my recommendation to the board to accept them as a second reading, and then they'll be implemented as of tonight.
Okay, so we have that the board approved the second and final reading. The following board policy additions, revisions, as presented by Dr. Vanderjack. Support by Don. Support by Ken. Any questions? All in favor say yes. Yes, close same sign. Next up, Dr. Vanderjack, we have more board policies.
Thank you, we have a whole group of technology policies that he's brought to the board for the last work session, and that received feedback from the work session, which is perfectly fine. This is just brought to us as a first reading. If you have questions tonight, that is great, if not, I encourage you to reach out sometime between now and the next, the next meeting when we'll have a second reading. So this is the first reading of the policies listed before you, and they are all technology policies.
Great, so we have that.
Oh, I do have to apologize, except for the first policy, the 90/30, that does go through and address the difference between business days and days.
Alright, so we have that the board approved the first reading of the following board policy additions, revisions, as presented by Dr. Vanderjack. We have a motion.
Move.
Support by Ken.
Support.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Close same sign. Motion's passed. Alright, Dr. Vanderjack.
So a quick report tonight, I do want to thank our retirees, I know a couple of them, just because of either how nice it is or how late it is, or maybe both did squeeze out. You approved 219 years of service, thousands of lives that were affected positively by some amazing educators, and we appreciate them, not only for their service, but the nights, days, weekends, hours in the classroom, not knowing what kids will say when they come to class and how you respond to that every day, is appreciated by the district. You have large shoes to fill, but as Mark Eagle eloquently said, you're not replaceable, we just have to some, we have to put somebody in there. Otherwise the kids get out of control, there's not a teacher here, so we have to put somebody in there. But thank you very much for your service and what you've done. From a construction update, we're moving along quite well the school store, which is connected between the freshman wing and the main campus, isolated to start moving in really today, but more likely tomorrow, it's in taking time to get situated. But it's a nice view when you walk up, the kids call it the terminal, but when you walk up and it's right there, they will finally have a home. The west hallway, which is along the current central gym, which is what you would consider the main gym, that hallway has to be open soon because they're gonna shut off the other hallway, because the cafeteria construction begins on this building over the summer. So that hallway will open probably in the middle of June, and they can shut down the other hallway, so all traffic next fall for students will actually use the new hallway because they'll still be finishing up the cafeteria. And all 2,000 kids will peacefully eat lunch in the freshman campus when school starts next year. So I will not be coming over during lunchtime on that day, Mr. Weill, right now.
Freshman campus security guy's already fired up.
Yeah, he's pretty fired up, his office is, he's right there exactly by you. Just a reminder to the board of education and to anybody that would like to see 478 graduates, 478 graduates, Monday, May 22nd, starts at 6:00 PM, does not start at 7:00, starts at 6:00 PM, please do that a little bit early, but we are looking for that over at Hope College, so that'd be great. Thank you to those that had an opportunity to vote on the Not Homestead and the Sinking Fund, we appreciate the support from our community. I do appreciate the work that Stephanie Fass did to help get the word out on the vote, and all those, a lot of our PTO presidents were actively involved in getting the word out. I do appreciate that conversation. I also appreciate my son helping to make a video that we can get out so that we could share the relevant information regarding the vote. Obviously a positive turnout, but definitely we're seeing things show a lot of support from our community for what the school system is doing. And I, I know we celebrated teacher appreciation last week, but we like them so much, we celebrated for two weeks. So we celebrated last week by, by recognizing them with treats and cakes and visits and just firing up our teachers, but this is technically Teacher Appreciation Week, so we want to celebrate them again, since I know a lot of them are here tonight. We just appreciate the work that our staff does in the movie. We talk about teachers, we talk about all support staff, we talk about from bus drivers to when the kids get off, to the people on the playground that support our kids when they bump their knees or they just need an adult. Our teachers in the classroom that also have support, our administrative assistants in the office that can't even answer a phone in two seconds because there's three kids standing there with bum lips and all that stuff. Our administrators in the building, our support staff, our central office staff, it's an impressive staff that we have here in Hudsonville. So I want to thank them probably. That is my update.
Alright, so the board's gonna go into closed session, and we will be coming back once we are done.
That's okay, yeah, it could be an hour-ish, I don't know, I'm looking at the others here. We will leave the motion in a second, and then we'll...
Will she go into closed session?
Uh huh.
Support. Support, okay. Support by Don, he will come, or?
Yes.
Okay? Or yes?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, we are now in closed session.
So we will leave here for closed session. When we come back, I can tell you the only agenda item would be adjournment, there's nothing else on the agenda, but you are welcome to stay for as long as this takes, or go out and stretch your legs, get some fresh air, and...